I will call to order City Ellsworth Plan Board meeting for April 5th, 2023. Introductions.
Molly Friedland, member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Hange, Alternate.
Patrick Lyons, Alternate, but voting.
And you're voting tonight, too?
Oh, I guess I'm voting tonight, too.
Yes.
Are you excited?
Oh, just loads.
We like it when we don't have, we can say whatever we want, but then we don't have to vote.
You don't have to be out responsible.
Adoption minutes from the March 1st, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any changes or additions, deletions? Can I have a motion, then?
Motion to adopt the minutes as written.
Second. Go on, David. Item number three, preliminary plan review for minor subdivision entitled Washington Den Lux, 3 Ruger Way for applicant and owner Ruger Properties LLC. The proposal is to split an existing multifamily residential subdivision existing on one lot into two lots. No other development or changes to the property will occur. The subject property is approximately 1.19 acre lot located at 3 Ruger Way, tax map 130, Lot 26 in the downtown zoning district. Who's here representing the applicant?
Steve Salisbury.
Okay, floor is yours, Steve. This is a tough one.
Well, it looks fine. Doing what we should have done a couple of years ago and put a division line on the property, so selling one building to a family member and keeping one building. So here we are, asking to split the land into two lots. The remote lot will have a 30-foot wide right-of-way to Washington Street, and they'll share the entrances. It's shared now. We'll present a maintenance agreement at the next meeting. I've got a draft already, but it didn't come in time to share either this month, but we talked it over with the staff. Maintenance agreement will be asked for, and we will provide, but the function of the land will change, other than just the physical ownership of which building, is owned by who.
So I presume all the legal lease, you know, the access to the lot that's getting split off and the deeds and everything is going to give-
Multi-page.
-the brother or whoever's buying it-
Yes.
...you know, permission to, everything's legal and he can access that.
Yep, just like any other sub- land subdivision.
And he, I think that all the utilities were separate anyway, if I remember correctly.
I think the water line's shared, but I think the electric was split, the sewers shared, eventually joins before it goes into the street.
That was the only guy had discussions with Matt on that. I mean, that's the only thing I want to make sure that-
Yep.
Because I don't understand the deed. Patrick probably does, but hopefully does.
I don't think he's supposed to admit that on the mic.
But as simple as that.
Yep. Any questions from the board?
Just that, in terms of what you said before about access and maintenance and so forth, that's all going to be written down?
That'll be all written, documented.
Okay. And will maintenance be defined somehow? Because that came up a while ago in terms of not, well, not too long ago.
I know they talk about-
There's what does maintenance mean, right?
Well, I know they talk in there about snow plowing and taking care of the pavement and stuff like that.
Okay.
Shared costs.
So taking care of the pavement stuff isn't, is explicit?
Yes.
Cool.
I'm sorry, I note alluding to that agreement on the plan, just the agreement's not ready yet.
Is it, I'm sorry, you say, is there?
A note alluding to the agreements on the plan, but the agreement isn't fully drafted.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I agree with Steve, it should have been done two years ago.
Yeah, but at that time, there was no plan to split the ownership of the buildings.
Yeah. You got to split the ones on Beetle Road?
We talked about that when he developed that project, and I don't think we ended up doing that.
And there's a public hearing. I'll open a public hearing. If there's anybody here to ask a question or make a comment, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Those are the wishes of the board. Any others issued from staff?
No, just the agreement's the only thing outstanding.
Oh, you looking at me? Okay. A motion that the preliminary plan, I'm sorry, preliminary plan for the minor subdivision entitled Washington Lux, 3 Ruger Way for applicant and owner Ruger Properties LLC be approved as complete, right? That's where we are?
Yes.
Yeah. I wasn't going to say the rest. Is that okay?
I think that's fine. Second. Go on, David.
See, next one?
You bet.
You guys better be quick, we get out of here by now.
Socks lost her.
Steve?
Yes.
Good for the eggs.
No one's perfect.
Item number four, preliminary plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Langley Ray West LLC for owner applicant Brian Langley. The proposal is to create a triplex structure, creating a three-dwelling unit structure subdivision. Subject property is approximately 1.2 acre lot located at 19 South Street, map 134, Lot 214-1 in the neighborhood zoning district. And Brian is here with-
Nick. I'm Nick Wood with Acadia Modular. I'm the one building the house and developing with Brian.
Just maybe, I don't think it's for public disclosure, I think just to say that a month or two ago, the planner board selected Brian to be one of the members of the conflict.
Yeah, you can mention it. I don't think it's a conflict of interest, though.
If that's a conflict of interest now, we're in trouble.
If we are.
We can't approve it. Okay, those, what do you have?
So we propose to build, bear with me, propose to build a three-unit triplex with two bedrooms per unit. The building would be a two-story dwelling. First floor would be the living room, dining room. Second story would be the bedrooms. The building will have a well and a city sewer or city wastewater connections. The existing wastewater connection is already on the property, so it would be a building off South Street. 19 South Street's the address, we'd building a road or a way off that road going to the property to the building. Parking will be on-site. We'll have, I believe it's six, if you can map out here.
Six.
Six, yep, six parking spots, two per unit. Each unit will be number one, two, and three, two parking spots, like I said, each unit. Egress will be provided on each unit with the front and rear, as shown on the elevation plans, two forms of egress. On the survey-
Do they have a site plan? It's on the site plan?
It's on the site plan, yeah. Yep. You can see the little doors on there, so.
Okay.
All right, Steve, write them in. Yep. So two forms of egress, front and rear. Trash removal will be done by dumpster on the premises located at the rear of the building, as shown on the plan. It says proposed dumpster, it's a square, right next to our proposed tank for natural, for propane, rather, for the heating system and the hot water. Staff? Storm removal will be done, as shown on plans. There is an uphill grade as you go up to the lot, so we're planning on plowing the parking spots going up the hill to not, you know, block them in. And rainwater and drains, as shown, again, it is on a hill, so we're being cognizant of that. We're going to do some rip wrapping, some water mitigation around the house, so the water coming off of the abutting properties and the road is dealt with appropriately.
Some of the paperwork, I mean, you just mentioned that it's going to be on a well.
Yes.
But you have a letter in here to the Board of Superintendent? I was a little confused about that. I mean, the TRT mentions it's going to be on a well, but there's a lot of directions.
Correct. So when the TRT meeting met, I was not under the impression of how close the city shut-off is to, or the end of the water main is to the building. It's, and I have some measurements here. Where the end of the water main ends on South Street to the proposed building is around 335 feet.
Do I have to connect to city water or not? And so, well, okay.
Lori, what's the distance that it has to be hooked to city water? Is that 200 feet?
So for the structure subdivision, it's not actually a requirement, it's, but the board can request it for a minor subdivision, but it's 200 feet. And so the way the ordinance is worded is it's where the subdivision's occurring, so the building itself is more than 200 feet, which is where the subdivision is, but the property lines like 80 feet from the water shut-off. The building's like 350 feet.
300, yeah, 350.
Yeah. And I talked to Lisa and Reggie, and they're both fine with the well for this project because all the houses back here have wells, so when they come back, they would have to show where the well is and provide the letter from the well digger.
But then I, I guess this is more an issue for Mike Harris, but, I mean, in the letter to Reggie specifies 540 gallons of water per day, but sewer treatment plan is 690 gallons of wastewater per day.
I was using the calculations they gave me, multiplied by six.
Yeah, on the emails, Mike sent them some numbers to use, and that's what I used.
If it was on city water, I just didn't understand how you could use 540 gallons per day and get rid of 690.
It's just the capacity, it's not an actual thing.
Yeah, average.
Those damn numbers get you every time.
They add up quick.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just a couple of minor things. You know, kind of based on the last one, you know, where we came back and they split it up and, you know, we've split lots off and other ones, is there, is there any reason why this, the giant space to the, whatever direction it is over here, could be broken off or subdivided off at a later time? Is that an issue at all?
So the red outline marks the setbacks. If you're looking at the property, the house, the structure, rather, is a little bit to the middle, if not to the, to the left. If you go to the right, in my humble opinion, that land's not usable.
Okay.
It's steep incline.
I can believe that.
It shouldn't be altered, in my opinion, for multitude of reasons. I wouldn't build one.
Okay. You know, I understand what you're saying.
It's pretty, but yeah.
The red, the red line is the, is the-
Is it forested?
It is. Some beautiful oak trees on there we want to keep.
That was, that was my next question, actually. It is forested now throughout, right? Just about?
Just about, yeah.
And I, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't go out there and actually look at it, right? But Google helped me out a little bit. Are those large trees, small trees?
Most of them are large oak. There is some pine in there as well.
Okay.
There's some ash in the front.
My, my question is, like, we should keep as many of those as we can for screening from the street or all that, so forth. But the corollary of that is, do the, does the exist, do the existing trees have any impact on the site distance as you come out of that driveway?
They do not. The, the first set of trees, there's an ash, some oak with kept, we're going to keep those there. When you drive out of that driveway or that way we're proposing, there's probably, I would say, I'm just roughly guessing, about 15 feet of left and right viewing space.
Of space.
Of space.
Okay. So for the last, from the last tree to the, to the edge of pavement?
To the edge of South Street.
So you could basically pull up into that spot and, and look?
And look, both ways without, yeah.
It might be useful to show a couple of those trees on the plan when it comes back, but that's a minor thing. Get your tree stamp out. Site distances, are there, is there a catch base, are there catch bases or anything for the park, for the parking area, or is that just runoff onto the adjacent land?
Well, we're hoping to do a swale, so at the top of the property, at the top of the, the higher side of the, the plan-
Right.
You'll see, that, that's a hill, and all that water's coming off that property onto this property. We're going to do a little bit of a swale with rip wrap and run that off. You're looking at the map, run it to the right of that, because there's a stream that goes down, and we're going to, hopefully can get most of that water into that area.
Okay.
There is a stream, I did get permit by rule by the DEP to go across it. It's a small ditch, little brook, if you will, it's not named or anything, but we're hopefully going to get most of that water off the property, so it's not in the driveway and it's not sitting there and it's not a road.
And it will drain off into that brook, is what, the line that is labeled brook.
Brook, yep.
Very narrow brook.
It is.
It's a ditch.
It's a ditch. I don't know what the DEP called it, but.
Is it year-round flowing, or is it just?
It's seasonal.
No, it's year-round.
It's a stormwater, like-
Stormwater?
-brook, I guess, like, so I was going to get to it at some point when staff con was coming, but, so storm, so Lisa and I drove out there today to look at it, because she had concerns about whether the 24-inch culvert would be sufficient to handle it, because where the lot is, the Gulf story roads, stormwater comes through essentially the properties that line South Street on this side. And so like all the neighboring properties have about like two culverts, there are two 24s or like a 24 and 18, some combination of those. And so Lisa was going to request that there were some hydrology numbers done to figure out exactly what size of a culvert or a combination of two culverts would be necessary to handle that, that stormwater, because as of, she doesn't think a 124-inch is going to be enough.
So the water comes off into the, off the building area into, onto the brook, and the brook flows down towards, this map says Laurel Street, is that correct?
No, it comes down the bottom of South Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh, actually, it comes all the way, well, but the brook is to the one side of South Street and the, I mean, it looks like-
It flows along the street.
-flowing to the west of the river, right?
Yeah.
So, and it goes through the culvert, once it goes through the culvert, where does it go? On somebody else's property, it looks like?
Underneath the South Street to the Union River.
So at the very edge of this property, there's a stormwater infrastructure that leads it underneath the South Street to the Union River.
Okay, okay.
Will, will there be another map to indicate a better idea of where the water flows to? Also elevation for this lot itself?
Yeah, I mean, for the structure subdivision, again, topography's not required, so it's something you can request, though, and they can add it.
I think it would be helpful just to let us see exactly how the water flows. I agree.
And then formally, I guess, if you agree with Lisa's determination, you should request the-
I'm sorry?
If you agree with Lisa's determination, we request hydrology numbers to figure out the appropriate size of the culvert. That's something you should, you should do.
Okay. I'm good. First one.
And the current plan is to rent the units out as long-term rentals?
Yeah, try to, I've got some employees that I'd like to house, so hopefully, got some people looking for, can't find much rent. So kind of under the gun.
So this would be long-term but seasonal nonetheless?
Well, they live here in Maine, so.
Okay. So you're looking for long-term employees to rent this, long-term, in essence?
I'm open, yeah, that's the way you keep your employees, have a place to live, yeah.
So a couple of questions. I'm not sure, I don't see it in the staff minutes here for the TRT. Was there any discussion about the closest hydrant to where you're building? Do you have that on your plan?
That was discussed, yes. The plan on the, on the right index says that there is a fire hydrant, nearest fire hydrant is 800 feet to the northeast at the intersection of Main Street and South Street, where Rooster Brothers is.
So it's 800 feet to the, to what you're planning on building?
Correct.
Okay. So here's the other thing that you will need to do, and I would make a note of this. In the Fire Prevention Ordinance of the City of Ellsworth, Chapter 4, Article 7.3, it says if the building is within 800 feet of the city water, then you are required to connect to that water by fire prevention ordinance.
Okay, so measuring.
So you need to do some checking with Reggie and the fire whomever to determine what you need to do with that, but that's Article, Chapter 4, Fire Prevention, Article 7.3. Okay. Mike, does the 800 feet specifying to the structure or to the lot? To the structure, to the, to the structure. And that's based upon NFPA 1, and the, I believe it's, I can't quote it now, it's been too long. Come on, Lori says, come on. I think it's Chapter 18 of NFPA 1, anyway. The other thing that I have a question of, in the minutes from the staff meeting, it talks about the requirement for high-challenge firewall, and I guess the question is, will you be showing that detail?
I will be. I'm running on PFS, which is my engineering firm out of Pennsylvania, to get that.
Okay, and you understand what a high-challenge firewall is according to NFPA 221?
Yes.
It's not just a single firewall?
Correct.
Okay. And you are aware that that is a requirement of state law or state statute from the Fire Marshal's Office, not just the City of Ellsworth?
Correct.
Okay. So we will be able to see that next, next set of plans or whatever? Okay. Good.
I got them.
Stay out?
I do.
Nope.
We don't have a letter from the fire inspector for this project. Does he find I'll get one to you today, or what, he just?
So there is some disagreement between the third-party engineer that the developer's using and the fire inspector on whether or not the high-challenge firewall was required.
Uh-huh.
And so as of yesterday, when I last spoke to Thomas, that had not yet been resolved between the two.
Okay.
So the state fire marshal's been brought in to discuss with the third-party engineer, and hopefully, you know, get him to understand that it's required.
Okay, so they got that squared away?
Well, that's, hopefully by the time they turn in for the next, yeah.
All right. And, and so you understand, so, and Brian, so you understand as well, the City of Ellsworth is a Mubeck town, the main unified building. However, the City of Ellsworth also, and this is where it was a nightmare for me, and Lori can tell you that, it wasn't just a building code town, but we also had to enforce NFPA codes, the 101 Life Safety Code and NFPA 1. Sometimes those two, they necessarily conflict, but sometimes one was more stringent than the other, and we had to deal with that. So that's why, even though it's a manufactured home, 101 and NFPA 1 requires that high-challenge firewall by state Fire Marshal Office, so we're kind of dealing with, we got a right hand and a left hand that we're doing some juggling with. Okay?
It's not uncommon, is it?
You've been in, you've been in government enough to know how that works.
And the only additional comment I have is now that, I mean, well, now with the 800-foot connection from NFPA, I guess potentially they may have to connect the water, but in the event that they don't, the well will have to be shown on the plan, the location. And just a question that I was going to ask, and then also Kathy brought it up, with the propane tank to the back left of the building is the idea that like a propane truck will be able to park in one of the parking spaces and then service that tank.
Ideally, yeah, there'll be some gap between that last parking spike, space in that hill with the rip wrap going to be, so they could probably sneak in if they needed to.
If you guys have an idea of what that measurement will be, just add that gap of measurement to the plan, yeah.
I was going to log the lineup, I just thought of something. I mean, where the snow storage, I mean, you feel there's enough room there to get to both of the dumpster and then the propane truck, get into the LP tank, oh, fine.
I wouldn't see any problem barring storms from 67. It should be okay. I mean, we have that whole area we're going to fan out for snow plowing, you know, the right would be where we're going to have the parking spaces, the left would be where we'd put any more snow if we had any extra, if it got really bad, had a rough winter.
Now, during construction, are the elevations drastic enough that there's going to be some retaining walls or?
We're going to try to avoid that. We're putting the, the building or the structure, rather, in, into the slope, so it's going to have a daylight walkout wall. So we're, we're hoping to keep the topography we have now as it is, pretty much.
I was just asking if you do happen to change that and have retaining walls to indicate that on the site plan?
I have a logistics question. If the, well, this might be more for staff or anyone that knows. So if you are, if they're required to connect to city water, how does, is that cost entirely on the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And who does the work? Does the city do the work and they have to pay for it, or do they have to get their own?
I think they get their own.
Okay, and then they have to get approvals, though, from the city, obviously, to do the work.
If they get a permit from Lori.
Road opening permit?
Yeah.
And it's just for the work done in the right-of-way?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, just.
Any other issues from the staff?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay, and I will open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to, please come to the fore and state your name and where you live, please.
So I'm Kathy Young, and I live at 23 South Street, just uphill. And I just have a couple of questions. My question was about, was there going to be a well? And if, and it sounds like there may or may not be a well, but if there was a well, my question was, does that impact the ability of the groundwater to provide for both? Because this is a significantly larger building, and it would be, it would be from the same, however the groundwater works, but, you know what I mean? So that was my concern, because there'll be potentially six people, and I'm one, and we're not going to be, our wells are not going to be that far apart. So anyway.
Let me just interrupt. I mean, if, if it is going to be on a well, generally speaking, it seems like they would have to get a letter from a well driller saying, you know-
They have to get a letter from the well driller, and their well has to be a certain distance away from any other-
That the well driller thinks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I had a question, what's the parking situation in terms of, is it paved, is it gravel? What's?
It would be an inch minus gravel, finished gravel surface.
Okay. Because, because there is, as we've said, it's very, very wet, and when Le Case, who I bought from, whose land this was, and they chopped it all up, they had to put two culverts in to my right-of-way, because, do not be misled, there's a lot of water coming down that creek all the time. Comes all the way from Woodlawn. There's just water all the time. And in seasons, and when there's heavy rain, it's, it comes up over my driveway at times and floods up below, up above. So, so that's why they had to put in two culverts. So I would be questioning the ability of one culvert for that, for that space.
Now, do you know, happen to know how big your culverts are?
No, I do. Do you?
Hers, we measured them today, so I did. She has, I think, the two 24 inches.
She has two 24 inches.
Lucky you.
And you're upstream?
Hmm?
And you're upstream from it?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a-
Kind of think that-
There's a guideline for you.
Okay, 24, 24, going into a 24, might be problems?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then I just had some questions about fencing. Was there any proposed fencing? Because there's a lot of deer and fox and movements, and I would wonder, I'm noticing fewer deer because of the absence of trees, because there's been, I mean, I cut down some, from trees in mine because I want to put in some fruit trees, and he had to clear a lot of trees to put in this. But are you proposing any fencing? And is fencing allowed? And what, what is that all about?
For me, I like natural trees for fencing, but I haven't gotten that far yet. I kind of like cedar trees is what I've used in the past.
So do the deer.
So are you like pro deer or anti-deer?
Oh, I'm pro deer. My worry is that, my worry-
They'll eat your cedar.
Yeah, they'll eat them. But what I'm saying is that fencing things makes it harder for them to traverse.
Yeah, no.
But you're proposing fencing, right?
No.
So that was a question. And then lights, just because it's, right now, there's not a lot of lights, and I'm just curious about lighting. And I'm just curious about lighting, where you're gonna have, because you're gonna have seasonal people coming home at night.
Just regular on the, on the door, you know, turn the switch on next to the door.
Parking lot light?
Yeah, I don't like light pollution.
Okay, because, because that kind of parking lot.
Not if, not for just on the building.
No, just.
You're not gonna have lighting cast down on the parking area, you're just gonna have it on the building.
Just right, yeah, just on the building.
Typical residential.
Yeah, residential lighting, yeah.
Okay. But, because I didn't know about, I didn't even think about a dumpster, but, so that means a dump truck is gonna come up, right? So it's gonna be, okay. Um, and then my question is this firewall, what does that look like and where is, if it happens?
You, you probably won't even see it, because it goes, it goes from, it goes from the base, the basement floor.
Okay.
Okay, to the underside of the finished roof deck.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so. So it's all internals.
Okay. And then my other thing is just a personal living there thing, because, and that's what I was asking Lori earlier. So when Jarvis' house sold and is now an Airbnb, two or three times, I've called him, because he's very responsive, it has transformed the soundscape of a very quiet community neighborhood, um, very loud. I've, I one time at two in the morning on a Thursday night, called him and just held the phone outside and said, this is what I can't sleep through right now. As I say, he was responsive, it turned off in five minutes, he obviously made a call to the house. I didn't know until tonight that, that there's a ten PM city, we're in the city ordinance, and so my concern is, it's, these are people, these are young people, they're gonna be coming home at midnight, they're, when I used to do that lifestyle, you're only just still, you know, you gotta, so, that's my worry, is it, and, and if it is Airbnb, there's gonna just be, they're not living there. So my hope is that people live there. Not only because we need people, have to have houses.
If they work for me, then they tend to, might tend to lose their job.
So, because it has changed the neighborhood.
We kind of put a little more, um, value into the middle one, because my wife and I are getting kind of old, and there's a time when we probably will be selling our, our, our business, and we kind of plan on living in the middle one.
Oh. So you can keep the noise down.
Eventually, down the, down the road a few years, you know. Both of us are closing in on sixty-five, and, you know, it's, uh, the restaurant business is pretty tough, so. Somewhere in the next decade, we'll have to think about doing something different. So we're trying to plan ahead, so.
Right. My only other final thought was that, um, there's, that's, you know, you're using exactly what you're allowed in terms of, from my boundary to whatever it's called, um, setback, and then there's another gap. But if there's a lot of snow and you're pushing it that way, there's not a lot of room, and we get a lot of snow. And I know, because I push it that way, so we might create this. Anyway, it's just something we're gonna be, I have to be mindful of is.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of place, because you're not gonna wanna push it uphill. I don't, and I don't. I push it down there, on the hill end. But anyways, just, that's a, it's creating a pretty tight twenty-foot, or whatever it is, boundary, so.
So the snow can go right up to the boundary, it's not a structure.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm just saying that, that it's going to, because he's gonna have to, just described, he's gonna have to make room for a dumpster and gas access, so there's only so many places to go.
I run a snow blower too, so, I, that's what I find works really good, in my house down, so, um, so that'll help move some, a lot of that snow.
All over the place.
Yeah. You can do that uphill.
So Matt, so, um, before the, before the decade is up, and he decides to sell, is there something that says that he can't take the snow from his property there and put it on his property in the restaurant, and store it there?
No, I mean, it sounds like more work than it's worth, but.
But I mean, if there's an abundance of snow, it may end up happening to be that, but I wasn't sure if the city had something about pushing snow across the road or something.
People do it all the time.
We do it all the time?
Yeah, people do it all the time, they push it across the road.
Yeah, but in our instance, across the road, though, straight uphill.
So anyway, that's an option in case we get an abundance of snow.
I'll draw my question.
We'll figure it out. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sarah Hustler, and I'm a neighbor up the hill on Laurel Street, on the corner of Laurel and South. And, um, I had concerns about the little stream, because it is, as Kathy said, it does run year-round. We've lived there since nineteen eighty-seven, so I can speak to that. And down at the bottom, where it goes under the road and into the Union River, there's a, a culvert structure that often fails, especially in the spring. Stuff, debris gets trapped in there, and then it will flood the road, and I'm just thinking about, there's gonna be more runoff with this build, and, uh, that just, I think that needs to be addressed. Or at least, someone needs to look at it and maybe redo it, because it has been a problem.
Is it, is it, is it a problem because the culvert, excuse me, the culvert gets clogged? Or is it a problem all the time, even if the culvert wasn't clogged?
Not all the time, it gets clogged, but I'm just thinking there's gonna be maybe more runoff, and.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
It's just my question is whether it's a maintenance issue or a design issue.
I think it might be.
It sounds more like it's a maintenance.
Well, and could be, it's an old structure, I think. I mean, it looks like what's been there all along, so I don't think much has been done to it, um.
And so if that's the case, I would say probably on the site plan, on the size of the elevations, to indicate where the, exactly where this water's gonna go. If it's gonna go to a city culvert, I think we wanna include that on the diagram, especially the diameter, because Ms. Davis says, or Ms. Young says, she's got two twenty-four-inch culverts, and perhaps they end up going to, let's say, two twenty-four-inch culverts, and it goes down to a city culvert of, you know, twelve inches or twenty inches, even twenty-four, or, you know.
Adam, Adam and his crew rebuilt that a couple of years ago. Adam Wilson, I think, and, uh, and, and, uh, I think it was him, and the, and the crew rebuilt that, uh, because it was, uh, clogging up and catching a lot of leaves and sticks, and they rebuilt that whole housing. And normally what it'd do is it would flood my whole lower parking lot, um, and it hasn't done that in a couple of years now, so it's, it's been, and certainly hasn't done it this winter. I keep my eye on it pretty good, because it.
So is this culvert on, is it maintained by the city?
It is, yeah. And, and they dug up the road and, and put, uh, some new stuff in, they built in a whole new housing and frame around that entrance into the culvert. So it's, um, much, much better than it was before, because it would plug up and just flood everything.
So this sounds like something that should be resolved by the TRT, or at the TRT meeting and the next one, and so forth, and to get Lisa involved in it.
Right, it's a city, that would be a city issue to resolve.
Well, Brian, would that, would that culvert appear on this site plan, or is it further down South Street?
It's at the, it's.
Very corner right there.
It's right at the very edge of, uh.
South of Laurel?
It's, no, it's on, it's in between, uh, the, my, the two properties, you know, uh, this property that this is on and, and the property that I own, um, the parking lot.
Bottom right, yeah, bottom right by the road.
Yeah.
On South Street.
So you have a lot of incentive, though, to not increase any kind of flow issues in that spot?
Absolutely.
Floods your business, probably.
In fact, I've walked that, that ditch through there now, and, uh, and it would really, uh, make sense for me now that I own it, to, to clean all the junk that's in there now, that would, there's fallen trees and, you know, in that ditch that would just create problems, to make that a, a real ditch. You know, there's stuff that's fallen in there over the years, and make that a passable thing for water, so that's what we would do. Yeah, because it just creates problems when it floods my parking lot, and makes a sheet of ice everywhere down there, goes across the road, like Sarah said, and it just becomes dangerous, so.
The ducks like it.
Yeah.
I had one more thing I just wanted to say, um, so, th- these aren't gonna be Airbnbs?
No, I'm gonna, um, rent these out, um, possibly to, um, employees that I have looking, um, and then some other. We also work with traveling nurses as well, provide housing for them, so we've done some of that this winter, so. That's, um, that's our goal, put them up, and, um, uh, again, possibly live in one ourselves as time goes on, so. Yeah, we'll do what, whatever we can to, to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments from staff?
No, I may, I reiterate, to make the request for more detailed stormwater information formal, but.
And, and Lisa will review that, the culvert downstream and stuff?
Yeah, so she was requesting hydrology numbers for them to.
That was her request?
Yeah.
Any other comments from Brian, or? You gonna do the motion again? I could, because I was so up last night. A motion that the preliminary plan review of a minor subdivision, the title Langley slash Rayless LLC for owner-applicant Brian Langley, uh, I'm sorry, owner-applicant Brian Langley, be approved in terms of completeness.
Subject to the stormwater data being provided as requested.
Sure, we need to have that in there, so be it.
It's in there now.
There you go. There's a second?
Second.
Hold it, Bill? You should have a second. How's it?
Heavy lifting. No, I didn't do any.
All set, gentlemen? Really looks like rage is the, is the thing to do. That and this was the law.
Yeah.
Instructor subdivision or?
Look at that, making good work of these, uh.
Could be a new record. Well, not that, yeah, not that, no. He's working, is he, appreciate it? There's gonna be, there's gonna be one issue.
A lot of trees.
Near and dear to your heart.
Right, but I mean, there's gonna be some kind of, pretty.
Well, staff comment, I, I didn't catch it before the meeting, but I think one thing.
Uh, two things for staff comments. First is just the comp plan update.
Excuse, excuse us.
Brian?
Hey, Brian. Would you guys mind chatting out in the hall? No, it's okay. You wanna be efficient with your tax dollars.
Um, so there's two things, first is a comp plan update for the board, uh, so the steering committee, or so the council at their last meeting approved the, um, Barry Dunn recommendation from the steering committee for, to be the consultant to work with. Um, the contract is now bouncing between lawyers, um, just to straighten out language, so it hasn't been signed yet, but.
So it's Barry Dunn is gonna be doing the?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're to encourage some contract with them to provide technical assistance on, uh, our infrastructure data that they have.
Who at Barry and Dunn?
Who are they?
No, I know Barry and Dunn, do you know who at Barry and Dunn?
Uh, Kevin Price is the, uh, principal overseer, and then our project manager is Carrie Wulett.
Okay, yeah.
Is that made with your approval?
Yeah, Barry and Dunn's a good shop. Woodard and Curran, do we know who there, they have?
Uh, Megan Roper is gonna probably, or Morgan, sorry, Morgan Roper, because she's worked with the city on most of our projects directly.
Great, yeah, those are two good, good shops.
Uh, so hopefully by the end of this week, the contract will be signed, depending on. I don't think the suggestions our lawyer made was big, so hopefully their lawyer approves it too, in a timely fashion. And then, so the steering committee discussed, uh, potential subcommittees at the most recent meeting. It's likely that we'll have some type of kickoff expo with all the different information, uh, on, like, the subcommittees, and then, I guess, some comprehensive plan information in general, just to get some initial feedback and, you know, get people who are really interested to come out and sign up for different committees that they could be on. So, once the contract is signed, I'll be able to have conversations with the consultant about a timeline for that, and then what kind of materials we'll need and what they can provide, um, for that type of, uh, event. But we'll hammer out more details as we go along.
We did, gonna divvy up the members of the steering committee on what committees they're gonna be on, so there's gonna be at least two committee members on each.
Subcommittee?
Each subcommittee, whatever.
Will they always, will steering committee members chair the subcommittees?
Yeah, I mean, so like, I wanna call them chairs, but they'll just kind of head up the meeting and conduct it, um, and provide feedback and reports back to the steering committee, um, on each one. But then the public, you know, if you show up to all of the subcommittee meetings for the ones you're interested in, you're, you're really on that subcommittee. Um, and that's that for that, any questions?
Do you have a sense, assuming they sign it in a week or so, when, that those meetings might start?
For the subcommittees?
Yeah.
Um, so those won't happen until after the expo, because that'll kind of be our kickoff, where when we do that, we'll also probably do a digital interface of some sort to find out, you know, from the public what individual, subcommittees' individuals are interested in, and kind of start making a list for those. By that point, we'll have had, our next steering committee meeting, um, now that we know who's assigned to which subcommittees, we'll kind of map out what day of the week, um, each subcommittee meeting could have happened on, and the timeline for them, they're not all gonna happen at once, because the chapters don't get drafted at once. I'll have to talk to the consultant again about that, to get their timeline of what order they're interested in drafting them. And I'll kind of guide what order they occur over the process, so.
Do you have a sense of when this expo will be?
I, you know, ideally, it might be able to happen at the end of May, um, but if not, I'll have to talk to the steering committee about potential date, because I floated the end of June at the last meeting, and, uh, it's a busy time for people, so you might not get the best response at that point. So, end of May is when I'm thinking would be preferred, before summer kind of kicks off. Uh, and then the next update's on LD two thousand and three, which is a state law that was passed involving, uh, density of housing and, um, well, it involves a number of things, involves the availability and the ease of construction for, um, affordable housing, and then also density of housing and accessory dwelling units. Ellsworth ordinance is already pretty favorable towards the construction of accessory dwelling units, and, um, dense housing for the most part in law, in the zones where housing is allowed. So, there's gonna be more tweaking on our part than rewriting new ordinances, um, but at some point, like our next meeting, um, I'll start providing more information about that so the board can discuss it and start thinking about it. Um, the state had a date, um, like deadline for, uh, municipalities to come in conformance with the law, but it was like ten months after they passed it, and their guidance wasn't very good, and so now there's, uh, public hearing next week going, postponing that date, and I've been told it's likely that that will occur, um.
Well, if they want to postpone, it's like two years, isn't it? Yes, till twenty-five.
So, but if our ordinance only needs tweaks, we might as well just get ahead of it. So, that'll be coming up for you guys.
Be interesting to, for the, it's good timing too, with the comp plan process. I don't know, some to talk about, but explicitly, you know, like saying we're already compliant with that, but is there like a way they can talk about how do we, or the ways that Ellsworth can be further? Obviously, housing's gonna be a huge issue, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the, the law itself has, you know, strong opinions on both sides, but, um, again, like, because ours, our, our ordinance is already pretty, uh, lax in terms of density and where you can build accessory dwelling units, I don't think it's, that's gonna be too big of a deal for us.
Lax, lax seems like such a harsh term.
We let you do it if you want. It's compliant, there you go.
No, I think it's great, and yeah, we might as well just get it done as soon as possible, and, um.
And there is a housing subcommittee on the comp plan?
Right.
Steering committee, right?
Yeah. That's all I've got.
Well, we're, it was a couple, probably a couple of weeks ago, we talked about, uh, wa, uh, paving, waivers and discussions you've had for like the tiny house subdivision and.
Oh, for, who can do that? Oh, if you'd like, yeah, to have that discussion now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the last time the Treehouse Project came, Thirty Old Mill Road, um, there was discussion for Mike about who gets to decide the waiver on paving of a road. Our ordinance outlines that to council for the most part, but there are two instances where the, the planning board may grant that waiver. Mike's ord, or NFPA, I guess is what, has the, uh.
No, our fire prevention ordinance.
Well, so if that's what you're referencing, I have a philosophical difference about it.
Well, all, all I can say is that, um, in what's happened in the past, okay? Well, all I can say is that, and what's happened in the past, okay, was that the planning board granted the waiver, all right? And then realized they didn't have the authority to grant the waiver for the fire prevention ordinance. It had to be the fire chief or his designated.
No way, because in.
That's where it went from there.
Our fire prevention ordinance, it grants, or it's, it's using language from NFPA as having an administrator who can grant these waivers or is in control of making these decisions. And the fire prevention ordinance lists out an explicit list of waivers or decisions that the administrator makes. And in that sense, that is the fire chief, but road paving waivers is not on that, that list. I mean, it is an option in NFPA to list that as something that the fire chief can grant, but in our ordinance, that's not listed. But there is explicit language that the planning board grants the waivers in certain instances, which would be one for, which is what Old Mill Road would have met in this case.
But correctly about the wrong, your discussions with the fire chief, basically, he was of the understanding that he can request a waiver, but the planning board makes the decision.
All right, so if, you know, an applicant wants to get his opinion or if he wants to provide his opinion on whether or not a waiver should be granted, if he's made aware during TRT that's being requested, he can provide that. So like if the applicant says that they wanna waiver, you know, public works staff or myself thinks the waiver's fine to be granted and the chief's like, no, our fire truck wouldn't be handled by that road or whatever, you can certainly provide that information to the board to consider.
So the, so what you're saying is the ultimate decision is, is, is the board?
Yes.
Okay, however, I would say that if the fire chief advises not to because of the potential for not supporting a fire truck or whatever.
I mean, that's, I would think it's a good decision to follow if the fire chief doesn't think a fire truck can go.
Persuasive to the board, but ultimately the board.
So in other words.
I think you would have bigger problem if the, if the fire chief is recommending against granting a paving waiver because of poor road. There's something wrong with the road standards. I mean, the.
Or the way the road was built.
Yeah, I mean, the road is supposed to be built to city standards.
Standards, and, and I understand that.
Yeah.
So the, the onus is to make sure that this board confers with the fire chief or his designated. That they know of the fact that they're asking for a waiver and not just grant it without any conversation with the fire chief or the fire department.
Well.
I mean, if we make that decision and the fire chief doesn't know anything about it.
Well, he will, he will. I mean, we go through the TRT process, so Thomas is here representing the fire department in that capacity, but Doug or Scott comes to all the TRT meetings, so they're involved and they talk with Thomas and all the projects. So their opinion is coming from Thomas.
Well, see, this is what I believe happened the last time. The decision was made to grant without any kind of convergence with the fire department. It just happened. So this was quite a while ago.
Oh, all right.
Well, the good news is it predates you.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, predates, predates you, predates.
I don't remember.
Most living being.
Oh, no, this was, this was quite a while ago. This was quite a while ago.
Now, so.
Obviously, coming upon the fire chief to, I mean, they attend the TRT meetings, so if he's got an issue with it, then. I mean, anything.
Well, that's where, that's where discussion about the waiver starts, right?
Yeah.
Typically.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I was actually on the TRT at the time, and this is where the, this is where, you know, we required the paving. And then at the planning board meeting, the request came for a, to, for the waiver, and the planning board agreed to it. And had nothing to say about it other than, you know, we're requiring it, but they granted the waiver, so.
So I guess that's consistent with your reading, but it's.
Right, so it just didn't make, you disagree with the board's ultimate decision, but that's what, how the process is set up.
And that's fine, so long as I, I believe the fire, that the fire department is involved in, in that decision.
And, right, so they'll, you'll hear what their opinion is on the waiver.
They should.
Through Thomas, and then, you know.
Both at the TRT and here.
Both in the TRT report and here, so that's information for the board.
It should be in a letter that comes with a packet from.
We can add it to the fire letter too.
Yeah, it should be in that letter as an official record of what's going on.
All right.
I mean, if the fire chief says there's something wrong with the road, then I would suspect the public works director wants to be saying something.
I have not experienced it where, if there was an issue with the road, staff generally didn't all agree that it, the way, like they need to improve their standards between TRT and when they turn in their revisions or we thought they were fine and everybody said the waiver would be semi-acceptable. Or like with Old Mill Road, we kind of have to work through the ADT and figure out a way that it would have been possible for the waiver to be granted, but.
I mean, I would, you know, there's, there's a subdivision that'll be coming back.
Yeah.
That right now is just a gravel road that was gonna be paved, but this is going on, you know, a couple of buildings of the bill, the road is, you know, what, what kind of shape is the road in now? I mean, when they come back to finish that subdivision, I suspect it's gonna be, have to be paved. But what has happened to the road in the last three years?
Right, I, if it's a project I'm thinking about, I don't know why that one would be granted a waiver for pavement. I think it would be way too dense to get around.
No, I understand that. I mean, I don't, I don't see us granting a waiver on that. What I'm saying is, you know, the road was built three or four years ago.
And, well, that whole, even, even what was already approved by the board has to come back now. Because, well, A, they're making changes to what was approved by the board, but, so that road will be part of that review, this new review again.
This is where Lori comes in.
As I said, does that answer your question?
Were you taking good notes?
I mean, the road's been kind of ignored for three or four years.
You know, because this actually happened as far as the road is concerned, and Lori will attest to this. We had a subdivision that went in and her predecessor was checking on the road and took his Ford Escort out there and literally almost sunk it right out of sight because the road hadn't been properly put together.
Well, it was a Ford Escort, but it was a Ford.
But anyway, so I mean, you know, it, the issue was if, if that kind of a vehicle wasn't gonna make it on the road, yeet. So there was some issues and I guess that got taken care of, but, you know.
You won't let a truck sink into a road, would you?
I would never.
We need a test vehicle to drive up.
That's what the coach.
She could take a city vehicle, not her own vehicle. On, on a related note, are we done with that?
Yeah.
On a related note, in the local roads committee, and I think that you know this, but these guys may not. Lisa was talking about having a workshop or something with some people coming in from the outside even to talk about roads and easements and what do things like, what does the word maintenance really mean when we say this road needs to be maintained to us, you know, because we typically just say maintain.
Right.
And it's kind of like, well, you know, does that mean the fire truck gets through with a Ford Escort? Might not, you know, or whatever. So my point is that whenever that actually occurs, I think that, you know, we collectively should be invited as well, I think, because.
Are you on the roads committee?
As it turns out.
Matic Avenue needs to be rebuilt, not resurfaced.
That's the one.
That is the worst road in the city right now. You should see that thing.
Is that the one that goes to the water thing?
It's the one that goes to his house. The one that goes to his house and the one that can use by semi-trailer trailers all the time. You literally peeled that road up. I mean, it's crazy. Kind of along that line, I don't recall the, the name of the grant that the city is looking at. Eddie, you wanna discuss that a little bit? I mean, it seems like that may tie in, you know, for roads and sidewalks.
Can you be more specific about which grant? Do you do the BPI, oh, the village?
Yeah.
So DOT has a grant program for large-scale, like village center projects in terms of improving. I mean, they have different goals, but like it can be used for improving pedestrian circulation, crosswalk improvements. It's not really for road maintenance necessarily, but, but like adding bike lanes, sidewalks, that sort of thing. And the city is considering putting forward a proposal. We have our traffic safety committee meeting on the 13th. And two representatives from DOT will be coming to talk through our proposal and our ideas more thoroughly. We've already done like a preliminary discussion with them to figure out. We threw kind of all of our ideas at them. They went through and gave us feedback on what would be covered by the grant, what wouldn't be. And now we're gonna have a more thorough discussion on like what the total cost would be, what the grant could actually cover. Like if we, the grant has a limit, but it's like a pretty large limit on what we can request. Sort of figure out how much the whole project would cost and then if it exceeds the potential grant max, you know, how we scope that down to meet it, but. So that might be, you know, might hear something about that in the future, but. And our village center, I guess, for bounds is like up to the high school, down to Water Street, Main Street.
That's our village center, is it?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay. Just so I know.
But High Street would not be included in that because per DOT advice, High Street would need its own grant program to look at. It would be too expensive to include, so that will be left out of this particular project.
Because obviously, I mean, pedestrian safety is lacking in many streets in, right in town.
Yes.
Kind of just lack of sidewalks or.
Right.
Or substantial sidewalks.
Yeah, that's gonna be really expensive to fix that.
Yeah. But that is, the focus is essentially adding sidewalks and bike lanes and traffic dieting.
This is something like Bangor just got one of these, didn't they?
I don't know if Bangor did or not.
Dover Foxcroft got some, I think.
They did, I do remember that.
Yeah, it was like bazillion dollars on pedestrian safety in Dover Foxcroft, and to deal with congestion. I somehow thought that was amazing. You know, I haven't been to Dover Foxcroft in a while. Perhaps it's changed.
It actually is. It's tough to drive through on 15 to Dover Foxcroft.
Okay.
Especially in the summer, people going up to Moosehead.
I, I sit corrected.
But that's just my non, you know, you're the road expert, traffic expert.
It's on the face of it, anyway.
Now, that, that's it for me then.
Any other questions?
No, I got, I got pretty much done now.
Okay, then I'm gonna entertain a motion through adjournment.
So moved.
Excellent, second. We don't vote for, time to go home.